Okay, I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the Boulder Valley Board of Education for Tuesday, November 13th, 2018. Laura, would you please call the roll?
Benford. Fuqua. Garcia.
Here.
Gephardt.
Here.
Marquess.
Here.
Myers.
Here.
Sargent.
Okay, please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'd like to remind everybody that the mission of the Boulder Valley School District is to create challenging, meaningful, and engaging learning opportunities so that all children thrive and are prepared for successful, civically engaged lives. So, thank you so much for joining us. We're happy that you're here to observe and participate, and as we always start our meetings, we'll begin with the superintendent's report.
Board President, Marquess, board members, it's a pleasure to give my report tonight, and this evening I'll be giving an overview of the Hundred Day Plan. It's been a long hundred days. I feel like it's been a few hundred and have been very, very busy working on engagement excellence and equity. And so, I'll have Randy pull up our presentation, and I think I'll be able to control it from here. And so, hopefully, that will work out. And so, one of the biggest elements of this plan has been engagement, and as I've been keeping the board up to speed and the public up to speed, I've been able to make it to every single school in the first hundred days, and I've done lots of deep engagement, and as you can see from the pictures, just lots of opportunities to hear directly from not only teachers, but staff members, our community. And it's just been really important for me to get out and be very visible and begin to really understand and meet the great people of this district and this community. And I've spent a good amount of time doing that. I've been to every school, and at every school that I was able to visit, for 50 of those schools, we still have six more to go, we held staff meetings with all of, with the faculty and staff where I spent 25 to 30 minutes telling everybody about who I am, why I'm here in the district, what I believe, and what it is that I'd hope to accomplish as superintendent, and then opened up the floor for any questions that anybody had, and had really great conversation, and then collected feedback as well. In these meetings, like I said, 50 in depth, and we still have five scheduled before the end of November and two this week, so almost got to all 56. We had a few that had to reschedule. But have heard from nearly 1,200 staff members who have given me personally feedback on one of four questions, which is, "What are you proud about of this district? What do you think needs to change? What advice would you give me as superintendent? And what do you think is one thing, if we did together, would make us the best school district in the country?" And so, that's information is just really, really valuable. I've read through all of that, and I've just been keeping track of those comments, and really have helped me understand some of the emerging trends that are occurring as we move forward. In addition, we held nine community meetings where 200 parents and community members were able to participate, and we held those in all corners of the district, one at every high school, and then three in Spanish at Emerald Elementary School, Columbine Elementary School, and Alicia Sanchez Elementary School. And it was just a great opportunity to give that same opportunity to our community members, and felt just, just a really, really engaging process, a great way to get to know people in environments where I feel like people got to get to know me as well. And so, as I've been sharing with the board and with the community, we set up a website to track the 27 items within the plan of engagement excellence and equity. This is hosted on our website. This is a living document. We're going to keep this up there because there's still a couple of areas where we haven't completed. We're still in progress. Item 1.5, which is to meet with local municipal and county leaders to learn about our community, and I've done some of that, but I have not completed all of that. We still have some meetings that are going on, and so that isn't a check mark. Item 1.4, to meet with each local Chamber of Commerce to learn about our community and its businesses. I've had a chance to meet with folks from the Boulder Chamber, and still have meetings coming up with the other chambers. And that's important to me because we need to make sure that we're great partners with our local businesses as well. And then, item 3.4, which is around recognition programs to celebrate student-staff, school, and department and community achievements. We've done a little work there, but we still have some work to do. And so, as I stated at the beginning of this plan, the things that I wouldn't finish, that I didn't, wasn't able to complete, I'd be honest about, those are three areas within the plan that I feel like do need more work, and so I wanted to just be honest with you about that. Some work has happened, and we do have details on our website. If anyone in the public would want to see where we are in those, you could click on each one of these, and it gives you an actual report up of where we're at. But just to highlight some of the highlights, last week, I visited the last school that I hadn't had a chance to visit, Birch Elementary School, and brought them bagels to celebrate, and so, got a chance to walk around the school and meet teachers and meet with the principal. And I've been in every, every school, which has just been really inspiring to me. It's one thing to hear about what's happening at a school, but to be able to see it with your own eyes, to be able to take tours in each one of our schools, to look in the classrooms, to meet teachers, to hear their perspectives, I think is going to serve me well as we move forward. Our community meetings were well-attended. Want to thank all the community members that were able to come out and participate. I really value their time and coming out on a weeknight to be able to do that, and just was able to make some great relationships. Again, 1.4 is an area where we still are working. That's myself with John Tayer, who's with the Boulder Chamber, and so, I did get to meet some of our chamber members, but not all of them, but we'll get there. Municipal, county, municipal and county leaders, again, most of these meetings are scheduled. I will say that the elections, some of our elected officials were busy campaigning, and scheduling was, kind of got in the way, but we've done a good job, I think, of getting those scheduled, and so, we'll keep that as a dot until we complete it. We've had some really engaging conversations around equity, starting with our district leadership, which was a meeting that was held in September, where we really talked about, as we think about equity, how do we go from ideas to action, and started really having a conversation around what would be the measures, that if these were some things that we were able to measure that we're making progress on, that we could see that ourselves gaining greater equity across our system. And so, started that conversation with our leaders, and then also had that conversation with about 150 community members on a Saturday morning, and it was just a really inspiring and hopeful meeting for me to really see the heart of our community, which is a community wants to stand for each and every kid and look at where we can do better and be willing to tackle some of those challenges. And I would say this is probably one of the highlights for me, as we think about some of the progress that we've made. I have truly enjoyed getting to know each and every one of you and working to make sure that we, that you're informed, that you're communicated with, that I'm listening, that I'm being responsive, and that we're working together as a team. And I would say that, and I've shared this with our team, and I shared this at DLT last week, I'm just really proud of the work that we're doing together and the way that we are working together as a governance team, and so, I think that that's been a great success. And as you will see today, there's lots of policies that are on study and for action, but another success, I would say, is this idea that we're beginning to review our policies in a systemic way, and we know that the adoption and revision and creation of policies is a big function of the board, and I'd love to commend you on the work that you all have been doing together on this. I think this has been wonderful. As you would see, I know we talked about this at our retreat, and so, we're a little bit behind, but we're finally getting there with some of our recognition, and so, we have the electronic version for you all with that, just as a way to begin to start to thank people for their great work, and that will be trickling down in addition to some other recognition programs we're working on, still not where we want it to be. And then, I would say that we've done a lot of assessing around our early literacy efforts, and in speaking with teachers across the district, great feedback on the materials that we funded and the board approved. Certainly continuing to monitor our rollout to make sure that there's fidelity of implementation, and paying attention to early literacy, and also heard a lot through many of my school visits and my community meetings on making sure we're paying attention to our progress as we continue to support our dyslexic students. And so, that was feedback that I heard loud and clear, and so, we're continuing to pay attention to that, making sure we're working collaboratively with our parent groups that are out there to ensure that students are getting what they need when it comes to literacy. And then, in regarding assessing our safety efforts, you know, very proud of the things that we're doing to keep our kids safe here in the district, feel very good about our security team. We're even able to come up with a couple of new additions to our security. We're able to install landline phones at all of our high schools, something that was a suggestion that came from principals, and so, certainly appreciate that. In the event that our network goes down or power goes out, people will still be able to call out in those instances, and so, that's something that we've been putting into place as a result of this analysis. And so, as I think about the emerging trends, things that I've seen, and these are really high-level trends, first and foremost, people are proud to send their kids to our schools and to work in our district, and that came through even as, in having conversations where community members or teachers had suggestions for improvement, they always ended with, "But I'm proud, and this is a great district." And so, that is just a wonderful, wonderful attribute. Our teachers feel valued and respected and listened to. I would say that in a people business, that talent is our strength, and education is a people business, and so, having great people is certainly important, and I would, I've been impressed everywhere I've been with the talent we have, the heart of the people that work in BVSD, and their capabilities has been really impressive to me as I've walked through classrooms and engaged in conversations. There is a support and energy in our community for supporting all students and for equity, and that has been true everywhere that I've been. We've got a great relationship with BVEA, and the community support and heart are just things that I think are really strengths for us as a community, and make me proud as a community member as well as a superintendent, that we have a community that stands behind us and supports us as we share our needs and our desires. Opportunities. I would say that I've seen really five big opportunities as we move forward that are going to help kind of define some of our next steps. First, that one size doesn't fit all for our schools or for our kids. You know, on a given day, I can start having breakfast in Nederland, have lunch at Platt Middle School, go down to Monarch High School, and then have an afternoon snack at Alicia Sanchez, and those are all in different communities, within our community, that are with schools with vastly different needs. And so, as we think about the systems that we have that are designed around a one-size-fits-all model, I think there's opportunities to look at that and change and adjust to make sure people are getting what they need. Just as I would say that that's the same for our kids. Not all kids need the same thing. And for us to be the best school district in the country, for us to be an equitable school district, that we need to understand that we're going to have to change the way we do business in some ways, that one-size-fits-all, it won't be the solution if we want what's best for all kids. I would say that we need to continue the work that we started around improving our systems to assess our return on investment. We always have to be looking to be more efficient and more effective with what we have, and we started that, and the board approved last spring, a program inventory where we've been assessing 260-some programs. That information's going to help us get better, and using that information to understand, are there things that we need to do more of, and things we need to stop doing altogether. And so, we are excited to get that information and learn from that as we move into our next budget cycle. We have lots and lots of partnerships, tons of nonprofits and groups that are within our community that want to help and support. I would say an opportunity that lies ahead is the strategic alignment of all of our partners to understand where there may be some redundancies, trying to understand those redundancies, align efforts, and giving people who want to help us a place to plug in, a meaningful place to plug in, to continue to strive towards our goals as we move forward as a district. One of the biggest learnings, I think, that I've had is this balance of local control within schools versus a consistent practice across the district. I would say that some of the things we do really, really well as a district come from people in schools, our staffs, our principals, our teachers, our communities, understanding their problems and having the flexibility to solve those locally. But I would also say some of our challenges come from inconsistent practice. And I think as we move forward as a district, that is a conversation we'll have to have with teachers, with our leaders, with our communities, on what are the things where we need to have more consistent practice, and where are the areas in which we continue to maybe even expand some of the flexibility locally, if the needs define that. And so, that's a conversation that I believe that we need to have moving forward. And I would say finally, that it's really important that we stay informed of and address community issues through constant engagement. I'm a big believer in making sure that we're in tune to our community. If something is going on, understanding what that is and addressing that early, as early as we can. You know, as I've been talking with our leaders in our district, you know, some school districts have the luxury of just sitting back and watching what everybody else does. I don't believe that's the case here in Boulder Valley. I think people look to us as big problems arise, whether in education, and I think that we just have to make sure that we're paying attention to those and addressing those as a team moving forward, and making sure that as things start to bubble up, we're on top of it. So, next steps. As I've been sharing within my meetings and have been keeping the board apprised, over the next six months, we're going to be engaging in a strategic planning process where we take the lessons that I've learned over the past hundred days, looking at our current plan, and merging those to develop a new plan that honors the great works that's been done in the past, but also takes advantage of opportunities to get better, focus on our collective priorities. Also, working on developing targets and measures of success to increase the accountability, to make sure that not only are we being transparent but accountable to the public we have the honor to serve. Also, looking to align our budget and resources to our priorities, and I think that that's a multi-year effort. I think that we'll make some strides as we enter this budget season, but probably need to be doing a lot of assessing during this year's budget process to make sure that as our strategic plan is finalized, and we move into the next year, that we have a process that really aligns the two really well. And I would say that, you know, over the course of the next six months, that there's some ongoing issues and priorities that were bubbled up from the board's collective priorities that I have a responsibility as superintendent to address. School start times, which we've had a work session on, full daycare, which we've kind of spoken to even today at our work session, our technology issues within our community and within our schools. I think that we're working through some of those really successfully. And then, our equity plan, which I know the board is very interested in, you know, we want to start seeing some actions to make sure that we're closing achievement gaps, narrowing those gaps. And so, those are big chunks of work that I think we've already lined out, that I'll be working on while we're working on the strategic planning and the budget process. And so, I'll end by just, again, thanking the board for this opportunity. I have had just an amazing, amazing first hundred days in this role. I appreciate all of your support, getting to know you, being able to have the opportunity to work together. I'm proud to live here. I'm proud to be a member of this community. I'm very proud to be the superintendent, and I'm looking forward, I'm just inspired by what the future holds for us as a team and for us as a district. And so, with that, we'll open to the board for any questions that you might have.
Thank you so much for that great report. That's impressive. Any questions or comments, board members? Shelly?
So, Rob, those last things you mentioned, like start time, full daycare, technology, equity, do you foresee those being integral to your strategic plan, or as separate issues that you're trying to resolve, or how do you see that?
I do think that they can be aligned, for sure, but I don't think I can wait till the plan is set to address those issues, and so, those would be really parallel paths. I feel like the board has spoken clearly to me that these are things that we need to be working on, and so, that's, we're moving forward and working on timelines that we'll kind of share with the board and the public how we're progressing, so you know that things are happening. But I just think it's parallel. I can't wait.
Okay, thank you.
I was at a couple of the meet and greets, and I enjoyed them, and I noticed that they were being filmed. I'm wondering, is there a link to some of those so that people can hear of your wealth of knowledge and experience, which I enjoyed getting to hear? So, I don't know if there's a video that...
I think Randy's working on something.
Okay.
I'm just not sure how the video came out. I think he was cutting that up.
I saw him working on it, and so, I thought it was going to be put on our site.
Yeah, I believe so. Once we have that up, the idea was, yes, to record that for anybody who wasn't able to get to be there, and then go ahead and publish that.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, Rob. Very impressive. The return on investment, I think that's something that really kind of raised my interest in terms of how you plan on doing that.
Well, as we're working through our program inventory, really setting, you know, my hope would be that we would begin to set a formula and instill a discipline, right? And so, today in the budget process, are there a set of questions that have to be answered before we invest, right? And so, if we had a program, we wanted to invest in a program, what are the outcomes that we're hoping to accomplish? How much time do we think we need to give this program to work? And then, how much money are we investing? And then, going back, and whether it's a program evaluation or a data point that we've analyzed, is it working or not? And today, I think as budget requests go through, we don't have that discipline across our departments and across our schools, but when you do gather that discipline, it really helps you to turn things on and off. In education, we don't have a great track record of turning things off. We add a lot, and I think that that's something that we have to have the discipline to understand that we just need to do the best we can with the resources that we have. And so, more to come on that in regards to what that looks like, but as we kind of share the program inventory, but I think that it's something great organizations do, and my goal is to instill the discipline across our district in looking at the way that we spend money that way.
Well, I'm definitely looking forward to it, especially that program inventory and all of that wonderful stuff that you're doing. I also attended a number of the meet and greets with Rob, and, you know, you were really well-received in all the meet and greets that I went to, and you did inspire a lot of people to ask a lot of great questions, and I'm really interested to see, once you compile all those wonderful questions, to see what the results are.
I just want to congratulate you, Rob. I think you're off to a great start, visiting all the schools, all the input you've gotten from multiple stakeholders. This was a very encouraging report. I agree with you that the teamwork and my sense of the board-superintendent relationship is very positive, so off to a great start there, and I want to thank you. And I want to thank the members of your leadership team too, because I know that your success is their success as well, and they've been very supportive and helpful to you as you've come into the district as the new guy, and so, thanks to your team as well for getting our new superintendent off to a great start.
And I would share that they have been amazing, an incredible team, super supportive, just have really just done a great job of helping me get acclimated, and just, like I said, we have a talent-rich district, and certainly my team's filled with talent, so I appreciate that, Sam.
Don't have a whole lot to add from what my fellow board member said. I think it was an impressive first hundred days, and I share everybody's thank you to you and to the staff, and I, along with other board members, attended some of the meet and greets, and I think Randy went to every single one of them, so special kudos to Randy. I actually ran into him at King Supers buying water for one of them. So, thank you. And, you know, to Donna's point, trying to get some of it up on the web so that people can see what they missed. I just have two quick questions. So, the questions and the sticky notes that you've got from the members of the community, will we be able to get like some summary of what those issues and concerns were? And I assume those will help guide us in setting forth the strategic plan. I'm just curious how you're going to roll all that together?
So, we have a few more meetings to have, right? And so, I've got a couple this week, but the idea would be to compile those up in regards to themes, and so, you would all be able to see that. And as we move forward, I think just a great dataset that we can start to understand what people's hopes and dreams for the school district are. I would say with the four questions we asked, we really gave people the opportunity to say everything that they were thinking. And so, I think that it's a great opportunity, and it wasn't a survey where people didn't, there was no context. It was amidst getting to know the superintendent and kind of talking about some of the strengths and challenges. And so, yeah, we'll certainly be able to get that together for you all.
And then, following up on Richard's question, on the ROI, what's your timing for giving us some of that feedback? I'm just curious what the ROI metrics are and how that's going to look going forward.
I'd say we're finishing up the program inventory to get that information, and that would be the first piece to that. And so, once we have that, then we can have a conversation. I'll bring that to you all, and then kind of set up a timeline for when we'd want to begin to discuss what that methodology looks like, and then a timeline for implementation.
Well, thanks. It's exciting and looking forward to the next hundred days. Thanks.
Okay. Well, thank you so much. And our next item is public participation. The board recognizes the value of public comment on issues related to the operation of the schools. To ensure that our meeting is conducted in an orderly manner, we ask that persons who address the board first confine your comments to matters that are germane to the business of the school district. Speakers on agenda items will be heard first, followed by those speaking to non-agenda items. We don't have any speakers on agenda items this evening. Number two, limit your presentation to two minutes. If we go over the first hour, public comment will continue at the end of the meeting. Three, recognize that students often attend or view our meetings. Speakers' remarks, therefore, should be suitable for an audience that includes kindergarten through 12th grade students. The board president may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's statement that is unrelated to the business of the district or inappropriate for K through 12 students. There is a lighting system on the podium, starting at green when your two-minute starts, turning to yellow when you have 30 seconds remaining, and turning to red at the end. When the light turns red, please wrap up your comments so that the board can hear from the maximum number of speakers. Okay, so, we do only have non-agenda speakers, and our first speaker is, excuse me, John Schmidt.
Thank you. So, first, Rob, great presentation. Thank you for giving us your hundred days. Overview. And I rely on to one of your positive points. I feel very fortunate that my three kids attend schools in Boulder Valley School District, so I think it's also awesome that your goal is the best school district in this country, not trying to just improve the school district. So, I appreciate those comments. So, hi, I'm John Schmidt. I'm a father of a junior at Boulder High School. He participates in the Boulder High School basketball team. He's participated on this team for the last two, two-and-a-half years, and over this time, we've been incredibly impressed with the head coach, Jack Clark, and his coaching staff. We've observed tremendous growth in our son, not only as a basketball player, but as a student athlete, growth as a mature young man, and someone who realizes he can achieve his goals through hard work and dedication. The coaches at Boulder High have been instrumental in his development. Last week, Thursday, we were notified that the head coach, Jack Clark, was fired as the coach of Boulder, by the Boulder Valley School District. As a parent, we'd understood from an email from James Hill on April 30th, that the basketball program had been under a formal review by Boulder High. Didn't know why, but there was a formal review. Boulder High had concluded that there were areas of strength and areas of growth, but then the new policies that have been implemented, there was new policies that were implemented, and that through those changes, the program was moving forward with Jack Clark as the head coach. This past Thursday, we learned that although Boulder High believed that Jack Clark was an amazing coach, the Boulder Valley School District had a different conclusion and fired Jack. So, I'm here today. I want to understand the process. What, is that it? So, I do. I want to find out more information on why Jack was fired. What was different from the Boulder High's review in the Boulder Valley School District?
Okay. Next speaker is Pamela Lynch. Is that correct? Oh, I'm sorry, Franklin Lynch.
Yeah, there you go. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm a proud grandparent of Dimitri, who attends Broomfield High School. He has a condition called dyspractia, which programs are supposed to be set forth for him to further along his education. Unfortunately, this hasn't happened at Boulder High School. Facts as I know them. An IEP meeting was supposed to happen in October. It did not. Broomfield High has not followed the IEP program set forth to them by Adams 12. At Adams 12, they were teaching Dimitri at a fifth and sixth grade level. Broomfield is teaching him at a third grade level, which does not, if anybody knows anything about dyspraxia, does not challenge him. He was supposed to receive speech therapy, but has not, and is missing approximately 2,000 minutes. Despite your outstanding report, sir, where's the accountability of Broomfield High School? For if you fail one child, do you not fail yourself? Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is Jill Sessions.
Hi. My name is Jill Sessions. My son is a junior at Boulder High School. His name is Adam. And we've been deeply involved in the Boulder High School basketball program. This program has had a tremendous positive impact in my son's life, both on and off the court. Coach Clark and his team of coaches are always approachable, both by me and by my son. And Coach Clark has always responded to every question or concern I've ever had. Quickly, he responds to my emails so fast. And these coaches were truly an extended family for us. Adam could rely on them as he grew into a young man. The firing, and I'm using that word loosely because I don't think it's really been communicated what happened, of Coach Clark is absolutely devastating to this fantastic basketball program. We are saddened and devastated that this happened to our program. I ask that you reconsider this decision. Or at minimum, open up the communication so that the team and the parents can understand that Coach Clark was treated fairly and with integrity. Because at this point, we're just very confused. I thank you for your time.
Okay, our next speaker is Regan Turner.
Good evening. I'm also a parent of, I have three boys in the basketball program. I've been in the program for eight years. I've coached for 15 years. These boys, the same boys that are, that are part of this situation and complaint. And we all are very confused as they've, as these prior speakers have said. We, I, we weren't involved. We weren't interviewed. Nobody knows what's going on. We had no way to communicate to anybody about, to provide any input, because we didn't know what was going on. And then, you know, it's very confusing to have, from what we've learned, to have Dr. Hill make a decision. And then I guess Michelle Darberry make a decision. And then, and then three days after, or a few days after, I don't know what the timeframe is, all of a sudden, someone that we don't know, that's not even part of the program, makes a totally different decision. I'm here to speak to and for a lot of people. I took a half a day and called some people. I've got the Bagleys, the Blames, the Wilsons, the Bakers, the Turners, that's me, Gallaghers, Delapaws, Davises, Van Busen's, Disipio, Kang, Rutgers, Kurtz, Waldman, Sharnick, Crimstock, Gussinger, Baumgartners, Lance Carl, and Tad Boyle. Tad Boyle, his son and my sons have been in the program for pretty much all the time. My sons go to school with him and been in, I've coached his son. He's upset. We're all upset. Lance Carl's is upset. We don't know what happened. And, thank you.
Our next speaker is Sheri Tebow.
Hi. I'm also here to talk about the Boulder High School basketball program, but I'm speaking for myself. I have four letters written from four former students, one of which is my son. They're all away at college and can't come themselves. To whom it may concern, I think you have made a big mistake firing Coach Clark of his head coaching duties. Clark was not only a good coach, but a great person too. He always has the best interests of the players in mind, whether it be on or off the court. He was always there for whomever had needed him and was always honest with you. I wasn't a player who got many minutes, and there were games where I wouldn't even play. But Clark still treated me the same way he did the starters. He told me that even though I may not get all the minutes, I was still important to the team. He was someone who generally cared about each and every player on the team. He had connections with all the players and was respected by them. He could yell or call someone in practice, but that was what coaches do. He would help players grow on and off the court. He had to make difficult decisions on who to keep and who to cut, but none of it was personal. People are angry with him because they didn't make the team. I'm sure if he had choice, everyone would be on his team. Clark is a great mentor, role model to the players, and is someone I look up to. He was always there if I needed a hand or would never give up on you. It was a big mistake letting him go. That was from my son, Shane Tebow. Davis Kang. Coach Clark was not the perfect coach, but he did all he could to be so. He cares more about the program and school than anyone. And yes, he would get angry and yell in the heat of competition. He would also be the first one to celebrate a player's success or help him when they were struggled. He was no different from any other coach I've ever had and expected. Well, I guess none of the other kids can be heard. But you should know that this is very upsetting to a lot of former players.
Thank you. Could she drop off copies for Laura to distribute if you want to do that? Thank you. The next speaker is Jack Baker. Jake?
Hi. I'm also here on behalf of Jack Clark, but I am a former player. I'm here because I'm confused, like the parents said. We, I've talked to a lot of my teammates that couldn't be here. And we've all had similar experiences with investigators claiming that we never had Coach Clark. And our opinions weren't valid for that reason, while other disgruntled opinions shaped it. So I am confused, but on top of that, as they've said, this program changed my life. And, excuse me. Coach Clark changed my life. And he was one of my biggest mentors and such a supporting force to me. And anybody who knows him knows that his dream was to be the Boulder High head coach. And to love and support. And that's coming from a bench warmer who did not need, he did not need to support in order to win basketball games. Like they've all said, I would not be where I am without Coach Clark. So I'm just asking for clarity. And honestly, to be better, because all he wanted was the best for this district and his players and this school. And he doesn't have a job anymore. Thank you guys for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Darren Woolwine.
Hi, my name is Darren Woolwine. Thank you for letting me speak in front of you. I also came with a group of parents about the basketball program. I am not familiar with the program as they are. But I am, have been coaching in the community for roughly seven, eight years since I moved back. I was a Boulder High graduate. I came through the program as a wrestler and a baseball player for many years. I was very proud to bring my two boys back to Boulder so they could go through the Boulder Valley School District. They're both currently at Boulder High School. One is actually playing in the basketball program. So my only real statement was coming from, someone who coaches baseball in the community, both for the North Boulder Little League, and then now I've also gone on to coach the Slammers, which is a kind of a travel baseball thing. Would really like to try to understand what you guys are trying to hold, what accountability you're trying to hold for coaches at the Boulder Valley School District and why someone who's coaching at other levels would ever come back and coach at Boulder High School if basically you don't have any idea what you could, you could be fired at any minute. And I really do have a lot of concerns on the fact of how you can retain quality coaches if they have no power or if they have no say, or if they have no open process, if they are under review where someone could come into their defense. Because it sounds to me like Jack didn't have any defense or any time to have defense. So that was, that's my only real concern, whether or not I would still consider coaching in Boulder Valley School Districts. That would be a big concern of mine. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our public participation, and we appreciate hearing from all of you this evening. We're now going to move on to board communication. Board members who would like to begin? Anyone? Shall I?
Yeah, I'd just like to thank everyone who came to speak on behalf of Jack. I know Jack. He coached my son in baseball and in basketball. So I know him well. And I can just say that as board members, we really don't get involved in these personnel decisions. And as, I've been in your situation before, and I know how frustrating it is. But we really rely on the district to make fair decisions. And so I've asked just to learn a little bit more about this. But I'm sure that when I do, I'll find that there was a fair decision made. And I know that's not easy to hear, but it's really hard to communicate about these kinds of personnel issues. And I really don't know more, so can't really say more. But thank you for coming. I know that he would appreciate that very much.
Okay, other board members? Donna?
And for, I think it's Franklin that had your IEP issue. I'd like to maybe hear more about why it was delayed or how it's being implemented. And maybe we can, or your team can get together and resolve that issue that you have. But I worked for years for the district within the special education department. So I know that, you know, those annual IEPs are regulated and required. And I, if I understood correctly, you said that it wasn't held or it was postponed. So I'd like to find out more about that. Thank you.
Okay, other board members? Richard?
I also want to thank everybody for being here and talking and participating. And I just want to say that I did attend, like I said, all of the meet and greets with Dr. Anderson. And I also went to the first meeting that Dr. Anderson and his staff called with the Latino Parent Advisory Council. And that was well-attended. There must have been, I don't know, 20 at least parents there. And they all had great questions. And I think, Rob, you really set the stage in terms of empowering people to get engaged. And I'm really looking forward to the work that this new advisory council for you is going to be doing. So, thank you.
I want to thank the parents for coming forward tonight. It's, I know it's a hard decision. I don't have anything to, I didn't know the coach. But I am always heartened to hear the positive impact that our coaches can have on our students. And so I appreciate you taking the time to come and share your concerns. On a different and positive note, in addition to the meet and greets that I went to with Rob, I went to the parity graduation at Boulder High. And Ari does a great job, and Christine was there, and the parents and the celebration of the great work that those parents put in and enthusiasm that they had and the families that were there. It was, it was great to be able to attend that, and I look forward to the next parity graduation. So just wanted to pass that along. So thanks.
Thanks, parents, for coming out. And thanks to the former student who spoke as well. We appreciate hearing from you. And if the standards for coaches in the BVSD aren't clear, then we have work to do in clarifying those. I would also just briefly want to congratulate Kathy for her award from the Education Law Center. Well deserved. Thank you, Kathy, for all your work on behalf of kids, not only in the BVSD, but across the state of Colorado. Appreciate it.
I forgot to say one thing. I wanted to congratulate one of our Boulder High School teachers in the art department. Kate Villarreal had her students participate in the Boulder Potters Guild Show. And they displayed much of their artwork. And one of the students, Laura Young, won first show. So it is an exciting time for not only the guild members to see the art coming out of the high schools.
Okay, yeah, and thank you all for coming and sharing your concerns. When we hear these concerns, we learn more. And hopefully also, Shelley, the district athletic review can think about this too, just how we can communicate when situations like this arise. I have a couple updates. One is, we have, every quarter, the city council for Boulder, the Boulder County and CU and the Boulder, the school district all meet. And we generally have lunch. And so this time, we had Suzanne Jones, Phil DiStefano, myself, and I can't remember the last person who came. But anyway, one interesting comment that I thought I would share with the board is how much Phil DiStefano enjoyed his visit to Metalark School. And it was because he got a window into what project-based learning and an innovative learning environment was. And it gives him a preview of what's coming down the pike for CU Boulder. And that was a great meeting. If a board member ever wants to go to that meeting, just let me know. I don't always have to go. That's not, you know, I've been a couple times. And if someone else wants to go, just send me an email and you can take my place. We've got another one planned in about two months. The other meeting I went to last week was the District Accountability Committee. I substituted for Kitty. And it was a good meeting. And I just thought one thing I would share there is that they did an icebreaker and asked each person who was there to describe one word that, to choose one word that describes their school. And so I chose a word to describe the board. And I thought I would just share, I chose the word caring. Because if there's one thing about all of us that, and I explained this to Dec, it's just how much each of us cares about students and how much time we dedicate for students. And it's so from our heart. So I just shared that with the District Accountability Committee. In case anyone brings it up, I thought I would tell you. So that was another one. And also with Richard, I was at the Columbine Community Session, which was terrific. And Richard is just amazing with a group of parents. It's phenomenal to watch him interact. And one parent said one of the most beautiful things I think I've heard, which was about his issue about with his child who was bullied at a middle school. And he then went on to say, I know that as parents, each of us has an issue. But at the same time, I want to thank you for all the work you're doing, and I want to thank you for listening. And it was, it was just, Richard and I talked about that. And I think we even tried to get the exact language that he used, so. And then the final thing is, we, so Randy wrote up a congratulations for Kathy. So I'm going to read a little bit more about the award that Sam thanks. So we are celebrating today Kathy Gett Part. She recently received the Dimitrio Rodriguez Champion of Education Justice Award from the Education Law Center. Kathy was recognized for her years-long work in sharing that all school-age children in Colorado, regardless of their background or their home community, have the opportunity for an excellent education. In addition to serving on this board, she has been a tireless advocate for better school funding, school facilities, and opportunities, as we saw recently during the Amendment 73 campaign. And she has been an advocate in the courtroom as the executive director of Children's Voices, a nonprofit law firm. She has been lead counsel or co-lead counsel in several high-profile cases, including co-lead counsel in several high-profile cases, including Lobato versus the State of Colorado. The award Kathy received is named for Demetrio Rodriguez, a lifelong advocate for educational opportunity and the plaintiff in Rodriguez versus San Antonio, a watershed case on school finance decided by the US Supreme Court. So I just want to extend our congrat- congratulations to Kathy. But in the same breath, I'll just make a note that we have, all of our board members are involved in a lot of things outside of this commuting, uh, community and making tremendous contributions in, in a lot of different ways. So I think we could congratulate all of us in different ways. Um, so that's all I have. And, uh, yeah, yes.
I know a lot happened last Tuesday. One disappointment to me was the failure of Amendment 73, but I'm heartened by the fact, and I just think it's worth mentioning publicly, thanking the voters of Boulder County, some of whom are in this school district, some of whom are in the St. Moraine District for, uh, their strong majority in support of that education funding. I think it was 63% in favor in this county. Uh, went the other way statewide, but, uh, I'm proud of the fact that a majority of our voters were willing to, uh, once again, invest in our kids and kids across the state. So, thank you.
Tina? Just one last thing here. Uh, I was invited to go to Emerald Elementary School for, uh, on Friday to celebrate Veterans Day. And, uh, and I'm sure that this happened in, uh, a lot of the schools in Boulder Valley, but, but they had, I don't know how many people recognized for being, serving their country. And, uh, uh, the students were there, parents were there, veterans were there. And it was just a great, great turnout. So I just want to give kudos to Emerald Elementary for doing that.
Okay. Well, if that's it, uh, we can, what, uh, yeah? Uh, we can move on to our action items unless anyone needs a break. Are we okay to move on? Okay, great. All right. So, our action items are 6.1 Personnel Items, 6.2 Approval of Minutes, October 23rd, 2018 Regular Meeting, 6.3 Acceptance of Donation, Foothill Elementary, 6.4 Acceptance of Donation, Heatherwood Elementary, 6.5 Acceptance of Donation, Lafayette Elementary, 6.6 Acceptance of Donation, Southern Hills Middle School, 6.7 Amendment to the Construction Manager General Contractor Contract for Bond-Funded Improvement Work at Nettleland Middle High School, 6.8 Change Order to the Construction Manager General Contractor Agreement for Bond-Funded Improvement Work at Builder High School, 6.9 Change Order to the Construction Manager General Contractor Contract for Bond-Funded Improvement Work at Platte Middle School, 6.10 Sale of Goods by District Employees, 6.11 Grant Operational Services School Access for Emergency Response SAFER, Colorado Division of Homeland Security. Okay. So, um, are there any items board members would like to pull from the consent grouping? Okay. Uh, hearing none. Do we have a motion to approve the items on consent? Okay. Uh, first by Richard, motion by Richard and second by Kathy. Uh, any discussion or questions about the items? Shelley?
I have a question about 611. Um, years ago, when we put a cell tower on Broomfield High School, we talked to some length about the, um, potential health effects of doing that. And I'm wondering if we, uh, we're now planning on putting more towers on high schools and, um, if there's been more discussion about the potential drawbacks of doing that.
So, I'm not aware of additional conversations on that, but I can check with staff and make sure I get back to the board on, on where we are with that.
Thanks.
Okay. Other questions, comments? Okay. Laura, do you want to call the roll?
Benford. Fuqua.
Yes.
Garcia. Gephardt. Marquess.
Yes.
Myers. Motion passes.
Okay. Our next item is Policy Action. And I thought we'd go through these one by one. So we'll start with, um, 8.1, which is Policy Adoption AA, School District Legal Status. And, um, I thought we'd start with a motion to approve and then we'll have discussion. Is that okay with everyone? Okay. Do we have a motion to approve? Okay. Uh, motion by Sam, second by Donna.
Tina?
Yeah.
I'm having technical difficulties. My computer won't pull up any of these, so.
Mine won't either.
Okay.
Okay. Yours is, okay.
It's just we can't read anything.
Oh, but you can pull it up on your, uh, email. Let's take a second to do that and see if this works.
That's why I brought my hard copy.
There you go. Oh, it's, and it's in a single document. This should be good. Okay. I think it's the one after that, Shelley.
The second?
Oh, okay. Kathy, can you, were you able to get it?
What was the date of Melissa's email?
Melissa, what's the date of the email?
November 7th or 2nd? Can you see that? It'll be everything on action. We have November 9th. I'll keep looking.
You're gonna keep looking?
November 2nd, 5:29 PM. Does that help? Did it come from Laura or Melissa?
Laura.
It's fine. Keep going over.
Do you want to look on with me?
I'll find it.
Okay.
If, if it's okay, uh, we'll, we'll go ahead and print a hard copy for whoever, whoever needs that so we can move forward.
Sounds good.
Does that sound okay?
Yeah. And do we want to move forward with this particular policy? Or do you want to take a five-minute break while we wait for a hard copy? Okay, we're going to take a five-minute break and come back to hard copies. Okay, let's go back to, uh, Policy Action 8.1. We had a motion to approve Policy AA. Do we have comments or questions? All right. Hearing none. Uh, do you want to call the roll, Laura?
Benford. Fuqua.
Yes.
Garcia. Gephardt.
Yes.
Marquess.
Yes.
Myers. Motion passes.
Okay. Uh, moving on to Item 8.2, Policy Board Adoption AD. Uh, do we have a motion to approve? Richard, uh, motion and second by Shelley. Any questions, comments? Nothing? Okay. Laura, do you want to call the roll?
Benford. Fuqua.
Yes.
Garcia.
Yes.
Gephardt.
Yes.
Marquess.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. 8.3 Board Policy Adoption ADA, Educational Philosophy. Do we have a motion to approve? Shelley, motion by Shelley, second by Richard. Comments or questions? Okay. And I'll just make a comment. Um, based on the enthusiasm we heard last time, I was wondering if we shouldn't try and do something with this. So if this is, if this is language that we really like, I, I'll just say that when I went to the visioning meetings six or seven years ago, when we were talking about the mission and vision, and I sat in that room for 16 hours, this never came up. And, and that's fine. It's just that if this is part of the heart of who we think we are, we should probably try to put it somewhere beside, in a policy that has never been looked at or referred to by the board or the staff. I, and I'm not being sarcastic. I just, if the, you know, I heard some really great lang-, some great comments about it. And I like the language too. So I'm wondering if we could elevate it somehow. Richard?
Last time we were here, speaking about this, that study, we were planning to bring this back once a strategic plan had been developed. And there is model Casby language, which I don't know if the board would want to adopt. So, initially, we were just going to recode it.
Okay.
Um, but then you wanted to add the, the one change around humankind.
Right.
So that's the only change we made, but it will come back.
Oh, it's going to come back anyway. Okay. Richard?
Yeah. And, and reading it again, uh, and since we have, we're making a big emphasis on equity and, and, you know, that, that last sentence on that second paragraph, it talks about providing equality of opportunity. It seems like there's, uh, language in there doesn't fit with what we're trying to do when we're looking at equality, so.
And this is coming back, right? So we could make that change at the next adoption. Is that the idea? Okay. Sam?
Did you say you're, you're striking the word man and replacing that with humankind? Did I hear that? Okay.
I think it's already been done.
Oh, okay. I'm looking at the previous version then, I guess.
Okay. Other comments or questions until the next time we visit ADA? Okay. Laura, do you want to call the roll?
Benford. Fuqua.
Yes.
Garcia. Gephardt.
Yes.
Marquess.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. 8.4 Board Policy Adoption EVCE, School Closings and Cancellations. All right. Do we have a motion to approve? Kathy, second. Sam? Any questions? Okay. Hearing none. Uh, Laura, could you call the roll?
Benford. Fuqua.
Yes.
Garcia. Gephardt.
Yes.
Marquess.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. 8.5 Board Policy Adoption JBC, Student Involvement in Decision-Making. Do we have a motion to approve? Donna? Donna, okay. Okay. Second by. Second by Richard? All right. Questions or comments on student involvement in decision-making? All right. Laura, would you like to call the roll?
Benford. Fuqua.
Yes.
Garcia. Gephardt.
Yes.
Marquess.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right. 8.6 Board Policy Adoption KCB, Community Involvement in Decision-Making. Do we have a motion to approve? Donna, second by Kathy. Okay. Questions about this policy? Any questions or comments? All right. Laura, would you like to call the roll?
Benford. Fuqua.
Yes.
Garcia. Gephardt.
Yes.
Marquess.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. So we'll move on to Item 9, Policy Study. And under 9.1, we have Board Policy Review, Study of Policies, ADC, Tobacco-Free Schools, ADD, Safe Schools, AE, Accountability Commitment to Accomplishment, AED, Accreditation, AEE, Waiver of State Law and Regulation, AFC, hi, then dash two, Evaluation of Professional Staff Administrators, AFD, Evaluation of Support Staff, IICA Field Trips, IICA, Student Activity Trips. Okay. Um, so should we start with Melissa walking us through these? Does that sound okay? All right. Thanks.
Starts with ADC, the tobacco-free schools, red line. Right. Now that we made all the copies. Um, so the board adopted this policy just last year in 2017. So the changes to it are pretty minimal. And they went through our Health Services Department and they were working with, I think, the Department of Health. The next one, the Safe Schools policy. So the.
Pause. Do we want to do questions after each policy or do we want to go through all of them? Board members? I think last time we did it after each one.
Uh-huh.
So let's, so let's start with, um, any questions about tobacco-free schools? Nope? Okay. Okay. Donna?
Yeah. My question has to do with explain, a- and I'm sure there's a good answer to the, um, tobacco-free schools. I know in the high schools, sometimes kids go to the car and shut their car door. What's the policy, or how do, how is that reflected in here as not appropriate or not?
It covers all of the school campuses.
And, and, but on E, I was reading, "School Property is Not Intended to Prohibit Staff From Utilizing Areas of Facility Where Smoking Is permitted"? Do we have those?
This would be a staff, um, PD or other event that had some kind of smoking section.
So the car is, are off limits as well?
If it's on school district property.
I just wanted a clarification. Okay. Oops.
We're not talking about students.
Either. But a staff member's car?
If it's on campus, then it wouldn't be permitted.
That's, I just wanted a clarification. I just know of people that have used their car for that purpose and I, I just wanted the clarification.
Okay.
I had a quick question on the last paragraph. When it says disciplinary measures for students will include in-school detention, revocation of privileges and exclusion, that doesn't say that have to include. It's, it's like it may include? But we wouldn't necessarily do all three of those things if someone?
Right. The discipline policy is, you know, the, in the J section.
Okay.
So that's the criteria we would use for any particular situation with any particular student. But these would be within the choices.
Okay. Great. Shelley?
I'm sorry?
Shouldn't it say "may" then instead of "will"?
It could. I think the, this was language that was in here before the will with the idea that there would be some sort of sanction for a violation.
Yeah, but I mean, it's inclusive.
I don't know if we could.
Maze, okay. That might be better, yeah.
We can do "may."
Okay. All right. Other questions? Okay. Um, ADD, Safe Schools.
So this policy the board hasn't looked at since 2001. And what I used here was the Casby model to flesh out ours. It's kind of hard to read on the last page. What I took out was ours. Um, so just kind of more of a bulleted list. And this one has a lot more detail, um, more contemporary about the kinds of practices we have. I had the security folks look at this one and the instructional side look at this. Make sure we're doing these things.
Can I ask a question? So it says, um, there are two reports mentioned at the end that says the principal shall submit annually a written report to the Board of Education. Is that, what, are we doing that?
This is, um, the report that goes to CDE.
Oh, okay.
Data collection around climate, school, uh, safety issues. I'm assuming that the notice comes to the board when that's submitted. But that is what that's referring to.
So is it, so then is it, is it referring to the State Board of Education because it?
Right.
Okay. It might, we might want to put to the State Board of Education twice.
Cause the second reference implies us.
Yeah.
I mean, it's my understanding that this is saying that the report that's submitted to the state is also provided to you all.
Okay. I don't think we're getting it.
Okay.
For what it's worth. Uh, and I.
Well, if it's in here, you will.
Okay.
It might not have been an agenda item in the past, but it was my understanding it was made available. It's certainly come through news and notes.
Okay. And then the, and then the next paragraph is where those are all bundled together and sent to the state. Sort of like the SIPs and the UIPs and then it goes over. Okay. Um, any thoughts around, Donna?
Not around that one. I just had some other questions.
Any, any comments about this idea that we would receive this report, board members?
Well, I agree, and I think the annual safety reports, it would be good to at least have those sent to the board as well.
Any other board members have comments about these reports?
I think I've seen it before.
You think you've seen it?
Yeah, but not like annually. Randomly, maybe.
Could it have been through DAC? Because they do, that's the only thing I was trying to think of. Sam, do you have any comments about this? No, okay.
Well, I could certainly circle back with staff to see what exactly the reports are, and how we would notify the board and make sure our language is consistent with our practice, or if I hear an interest in getting this, then I can clarify what it is you will be getting and when.
And I think we wanna be sensitive to any kind of burden that we would be placing, so before we get ahead of ourselves.
Right, it was my understanding this was reporting that was already being done, and maybe not been forwarded to you all consistently, so we can, I'll follow up.
Okay. Donna, you had a separate issue?
So on number one, the procedures that address the supervision and security of school buildings and grounds, would that include the procedures for what controlled access looks like? For example, FOBs that students might use, or staff, locks on doors, secured entry? Or is that, I just seem to think that procedure was missing, but maybe it's meant to be under number one or part of?
I guess I'm not exactly understanding what your question is.
Just how the controlled access procedure, it would be implemented, and I don't, I don't know if it's, would you consider that under the number one?
I think it would fit within that. The physical security of the buildings.
And then number two, can you just give me an example of the assessments by the school climate professionals? Who might that be?
Wait, are you talking about number two?
Ten, now.
Ten, ten, okay. I thought you said two. Well, this one, I understand that we are doing a climate survey, starting again this year, and we'll be doing that going forward. Sam, SCA, could address that more specifically.
Okay, so the school climate professionals, I just wanted an example of what, who that would be. The people that developed the survey, or would it be?
Counselors? Principal? I mean, the language, do you wanna see the language?
Would it, would it be cleaner to, to look at that language and then maybe, you know, if, if we're referring to school climate professionals as district staff?
Okay.
Melissa, did you copy that? The school climate professionals, it's, you know, this almost reads as if we have these school climate professionals that we bring in.
That was my question.
But I don't think that's the case. So maybe we just would adjust the wording, to say district staff.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
I was just wondering who that group was. I missed it.
Other questions? Are you done, Donna? I'm sorry. Okay, other questions? Kathy?
Melissa, I remember last year Cherry Creek got into a fair amount of hot water over their reporting over criminal charges. Do you remember that? Does this address the issues and the lessons that were learned from that? I'm trying to remem-, I could try to look back.
It refers to the child abuse reporting.
I'm looking at 16.
Well, that's the new state law that requires the notification to parents if there's a criminal charge against an employee.
I'll, I just remember the Cherry Creek-
Are you talking about failure to report issues? I mean, we do a lot of training around mandatory reporting, and I know this refers to that in general. It might be 14, where it's talking about sexual abuse as well, but I think that's where it was picked up.
I think it was more, what I'm remembering from Cherry Creek was the reporting to the parents when they're, and I know it gets tricky with whether it's allegations or charges, or when the reporting has to be done. So I was just wanting to make sure that we were reflecting kind of the lessons learned last year from that. That's all.
And that's certainly, I think, the law came, that new law came out of that around parent notification, and that's what that last bullet, 16, is reflecting. And we, we have procedures, we've got working with HR and Communications. They have a flow chart they use internally to make sure that reporting goes out.
Yeah, I just remember that there was a lot of concern because required by state law can be a good thing, or it can let you hide behind something, and I just wanted to make sure it wasn't the latter.
Okay, thank you. Are there other questions about Safe Schools? No? All right, we'll see that back, I think.
All right.
The next one is AE, Accountability, Commitment to Accomplishment.
So this one, we're not recommending any changes. Compared it to the CASB model, it's still consistent with that.
Okay. And any comments on AER? At the same time, or?
The only change to the regulation is to, a reminder basically to DAC and SACs that when we say that "Parents Appointed to Reflect the Student Population Significantly Represented Within the District", that there's state law and state board rules that make that a pretty expansive definition as leadership and DAC and the SACs change over time. I think this would be good to add into the regulation.
Okay, and any questions, board members on these? Donna?
Maybe one on the, just the title, kind of I, I was thinking it would go through something similar. I just thought the title might make more sense to say, "The makeup and appointment of the DAC and SAC", but maybe not. It just was the same, "Accountability, Commitment to Accomplishment." When I read it, I thought it was going to read differently, but it was more, the title seems to not reflect exactly what the document's about.
Would it be possible to put the word DAC or SAC in the title, so that if someone were looking for the policy around that, it would be easier?
Right, and maybe put in parentheses under it, including composition of DAC and SAC, or something like that.
Would that be helpful?
It would be.
And I have a question, and I know it's in the regulation, but I'm not sure I was aware we had a six-year term limit on DAC members. We, that's, is that state? That you can't have more than three consecutive two-year terms?
Pretty sure the term limit part was, but I could double-check with the statute. And I know that DAC's aware of it, because they were just looking at their bylaws at the end of the year, and didn't have any requests in terms of the policy language.
Okay.
When they were updating their bylaws, but I can double-check.
Okay, thanks. Other questions on DAC and SAC? No? Okay. Then let's move on to accreditation.
So this is a CASB model policy that we're recommending is adopted. I think we might have had this a while, many years ago, but it really is something we should have in policy. And it reflects our current practice in terms of reporting to the board. I did check, yeah, with Jonathan Dings on that, so you should be getting the, the plan types, and then you review and approve, priority improvement, turnaround plans.
Okay, any questions or comments? Kathy?
This is just my bad memory. Do we see the accreditation contract?
We see the plans.
We see the plans, but do we see the-
I don't know if that's something you sign every year. I thought that was kind of an ongoing thing. I'm not sure. I think we just do the assurances each year. But I don't know. Can I ask about that?
Yep.
I feel like the accreditation contract was a one-time thing.
Any other questions or comments on accreditation? Okay, our next one is waiver of state law and regulation.
This is another CASB model policy that we don't currently have, that seems worthwhile having. It is, pretty much is restating the state law, but I think it's a good reminder to the board that you do have this option. It's pretty involved, but it's laid out here.
Yep, Donna?
So just bring me up to speed. It's just a question that, I don't know how this goes about when you do waive something. For example, if we have a state mandate, and I think Bill talked about some tonight that can come about, whether it's complying with the REED Act, or he, he listed some other things tonight in our meeting earlier. How does one go about applying, and, and does the law allow for waivers, or is there certain things that you just can't waive?
There are a few things that you can't waive, and that's specified in the statute. I don't think it's picked up in here. And then the process involves DAC and public meetings, and often the union if it's employee-related.
I noticed in this that on number one, that waivers could, it suggests waivers could be made on a school-by-school basis. Does that include neighborhood schools? So could we request a waiver for a district school, or is that applying mostly to charter schools?
The piece that I would need to research, I can't remember if they would have to be designated innovation first or not. I have to look at that.
Okay. I was just curious if any individual, if any school would wanna take advantage of that, whether they know they have that option. Okay, any other questions on waiver of state law and regulation? Okay, so then we'll move on to the next one, which is Evaluation of Professional Staff Administrators.
So the next two policies, they're also duplicated in the G section, so all we're recommending is that we take it out of the A section, and we just have all the personnel together in the G section. They're just sort of freestanding, and not the obvious place to look. So we're not recommending any change to the content at this point, and it'll all come back when we look at Gs later.
Any? We're not looking at these, huh?
Okay.
Is everyone okay with that? Okay. So the next policy then is field trips and student activity trips.
The next two policies, the first is field trip, and then the IICA, a student activity trip. So we're proposing the activity trip policy be deleted, but we're basically taking the relevant language and putting it all together, so all of our field trip, activity trip-related stuff is all in one document. We're still working on the regulation that goes with this. We're recommending deletion of the activity trip regulation, and we've embedded that in the regulation we're working on. We're really close, but this is where kind of the real heart of field trip practice in terms of day-to-day at the schools is, and so we're, we've had many meetings about some of the details on where we wanna land. So that'll come back to you for information, the regulation part. But the language for IICA, again, it's incorporating some of that activity trip language and, and looking at the CASB model policy.
Quick related question. That resolution we passed, I think it was spring of 17 maybe, about prohibiting field trips to Rocky Flats, how does that interact with this? Does it go in the regulation, or is it just its own freestanding thing?
So the, the regulation is more detailed than this, and talking about more in a general sense, the kind of places that administrators and sponsors should select for field trips. And then the other more nitty-gritty that we're working on is, we're finalizing a checklist and a approval form that the building could use, that actually does have some real specific language about, "Have you considered weather, and the safety of the location?", and using Rocky Flats as an example of something that the board has held to be not appropriate. So that information will go to the schools, but it won't be in the form of a board policy or regulation. More in a day-to-day checklist.
Does it still prevent schools from sending their kids to Rocky Flats?
Say that again?
Does, but, does it, but the way you would word it would still prevent any school from sending their students to Rocky Flats, is that correct?
Right. And they're-
You're listening as an example, though, versus a prohibition?
I believe the goal of the board was to prohibit that. Of course, a future board could undo that.
Why would we undo that?
I mean, no, I'm not wanna undo that, but I, I think what I thought I was voting on was a prohibition on field trips to Rocky Flats.
It's, they're, are not occurring.
They're not occurring?
Correct.
And, and the language you just described would prevent them from occurring in the future?
Right, it was an example of a trip that you wouldn't approve.
Okay, thanks.
That the principal wouldn't approve.
Just wanted to make sure.
Okay.
I guess, just a clarifying question. So, given the board's position on this, would this be embedded in regulation? In, in policy, or does it need to be embedded in either, just as a general understanding that we're not, because of the approvals processes, and we're not gonna approve those?
Right, we've, I mean, we've approached it as the board has a resolution on that, so we would make sure our administrators knew that that wouldn't be, that shouldn't be approved as a field trip, but it was more in the day-to-day working documents. I mean, it could be embedded in the regulation.
I think that was the intent of the board.
Maybe in the regulation, if the board passes a resol-, you know, maybe not speaking to specifically, but giving the board, this board and future boards, an avenue of their places where they didn't want people to travel, a process where a resolution would pass, and then therefore that would fall into the, does that make sense?
Sure.
Is that, am I hearing the board correctly on that?
Yeah, and I, I would ask, in practice, if you were a teacher scheduling a field trip, where would you go? Would you go to this policy, or would you go somewhere else if you were looking for information on whether you can?
I can't exactly speak to that. It's my understanding that the buildings have their own process.
Okay.
And at one point, there was a consistent kind of form that was used, but that was years ago. So we're kind of re-upping our form. This is kind of the district expectation on, use this checklist. It's to cover all kinds of things, like the location, and the, the medical needs of the students going on the trip, and the chaperones, and that piece. Then there would be a formal sign-off on this particular form by a principal that they're okaying going forward with planning the trip.
And so would a trip that's organized by a teacher through a different agency outside of the school fall under the same process?
If it's school-sponsored, it would go through this process.
I don't know if that would be school-sponsored. It's probably not school-sponsored, right?
Well, occasionally, there are trips that are not school-sponsored, but we can't own those.
Right, okay. Because that's, even though a teacher organizes it, it doesn't mean that it's school-sponsored, right?
They're not supposed to be advertising it through
Right.
school means. They would rent a classroom if they were gonna have a meeting about it after school, like those are, we don't own those.
Okay. Donna?
And this'll probably be addressed in a different area when we talk about a different policy, but will we address appropriate use of technology on field trips? And where would that be?
Well, there, the regulation has some language around, students are expected to follow all policies, no matter where they are, including on field trips and overnight field trips, so.
Okay. Other questions on student activity trips? Okay, well, I think that concludes our policy study, and we can then move on to study items, agenda setting. Board members, any comments or additions to agenda setting? Anything? Sam?
You know, just noting for the record that tomorrow is National Educational Support Professionals Day, and appreciating our paraprofessionals very much for the work you do to support our, our classrooms, our students, our teachers. Thank you very much. It just reminds me that we, in the past, at some point during our time on the board, Shelley, we would have check-in kind of work session-type meetings with our different employee groups, and I found those valuable, both with the paraprofessionals, the classified staff- staff, et cetera, and at some point would like to get back to those. And thanks again to all our pairs.
Thank you, Sam.
Agenda setting item?
Yeah.
Well, to have the meetings again with the paraprofessional staff, is that correct?
Yeah.
With a lead-in. A nice lead-in, very nice lead-in, yeah.
That is what just occurred.
Yeah. Okay, any other agenda items, discussion points? Okay, great, then this meeting is adjourned.